Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The hour is seven o'clock and as Mayor, I hereby call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of Laconia City Council, February 8, 2016. As always, we will begin our meeting with a salute to our American flag. I would ask that you rise, please, and join Councilor Brenda Bear in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Note for the record that all six city councilors are present tonight. Actually, we gotta call the roll, don't we? Yes, we do. Well, I can see that they're all here, but we'll follow the rules in a second. I will note for the record that the minutes of tonight's meeting are being kept by Mary Reynolds, City Clerk, and I would ask her to please make it official by calling the roll.
Councilor Doyle.
Here.
Councilor Bowden.
Here.
Councilor Littman.
Here.
Councilor Bear.
Present.
Councilor Moore.
Here.
Councilor Bolduc.
Here.
President.
Now, we can officially note that all six city councilors are present tonight and a quorum for this meeting has been established. And I would also note for the record that the council is joined at the table tonight by City Manager Scott Myers and by the City Finance Director Donna Woodham. Nice to see so many of you here tonight, and we're gonna start with a little presentation here, and for that, I'm gonna come around to the front microphone.
I have no idea.
One of the nice things that we are able to do here, and that I am personally able to do as Mayor from time to time, is to recognize outstanding achievements and mark outstanding and important events in our community's history, and we have such a recognition tonight, and that is for the Lakes Region Scholarship Foundation, which is celebrating its 60th anniversary of incorporation on February 16th. So I have a proclamation here, and before I give that proclamation to members of the Scholarship Foundation Board of Trustees who are with us here tonight, I would like to read it into the record. So if you'll bear with me here, we have a proclamation that states, "Whereas the Lakes Region Scholarship Foundation will be celebrating their 60th anniversary of incorporation on February 18, 2016, and whereas sixty years ago, a meeting was held to consider the desirability of establishing an incorporated foundation, which would improve the administration of academic scholarships granted by various organizations of the area, and which might also to increase the number and amount of these scholarships," that's in quotations, that statement, "and whereas the mission and purposes of the Lakes Region Scholarship Foundation is to promote and encourage scholarships and opportunities for higher education among residents of the Lakes Regions of New Hampshire, to act as a clearinghouse to receive scholarship funds from various donors, to encourage the establishment of additional scholarships, and to screen applicants and distribute scholarships to qualifying applicants. And whereas, through the zealous efforts of a handful of concerned citizens, along with the generosity of local organizations and individuals, that first year, 1956, a total of $2,650 was awarded to sixteen students by eight donors through the Lakes Region Scholarship Foundations. The eight donors involved in the birth of the foundation were the Laconia Evening Citizen, Laconia Women's Club, the Lakeport Women's Club, the Kiwanis Club of Laconia, the Laconia Lodge of Elks, Laconia Emblem Club, the Laconia Rotary Club, and Mr. Charles P. Raymond. All of those organizations, four donors, have remained continuous supporters of the foundation for sixty years. They would be the Kiwanis Club of Laconia, the Lakeport Women's Club, the Laconia Emblem Club, and the Rotary Clubs of Laconia, Guilford, and the Lakes Region. And whereas, since 1956, the Scholarship Foundation has awarded over $5.2 million, helping more than 4,600 students, thanks to the generosity of approximately 525 different donors. And whereas, through the donations of individuals, the foundation has also provided a service which goes to the heart of the organization by helping families honor their loved ones and perpetuate their memories of their loved ones. This special part of the task of the Scholarship Foundation is evidenced by the fact that over seventy percent of the donor base is comprised of memorial funds. Now, therefore, in recognition of the great contribution of the Lakes Region Scholarship Foundation has made to the community of Laconia, the Mayor and City Council and all the residents congratulate the foundation on its 60th anniversary of helping residents achieve their goal of a higher education. Signed by me, this date, Edward J. Engler, Mayor of the City of Laconia." I think that pretty much says it all, and I'd like to ask the current President of the Trustees of the foundation, Mike Nolan, and the past President and Assistant Director, Paulette Loughlin, to please join me and accept this. Paulette, congratulations for all you have done. Mike, take his hand to you. And this is the proclamation here, and let you have that. And I wish that we were joined tonight by, we all do, by Joanne Cormier.
Yeah, Joanne's been there.
And I understand she's a little under the weather.
She is.
And is unable to join us tonight, and that's sad, because she has been the heart of this foundation from the very beginning. So we all wish her well and hope for her speedy recovery as well. Thank you, Honorable.
Joanne has been with the organization for forty-eight years.
Forty-eight years.
Yes, and her goal is to make it to fifty.
Got one more here, I think. Thank you.
Thank you.
We all appreciate everything you all have done. Thank you both for the good work. Thank you. Okay, the next order of business is the acceptance of minutes of previous meetings. And councilors, in your packets, I believe that starts on page five. You have a copy of the minutes of the January 25, 2016, meeting. Those minutes were distributed to the council on Monday, May 1st. Corrections were later made to spelling and grammatical items and redistributed again to the council on February 5, 2016. No further corrections or additions were requested of the clerk, so I would ask at this point in time if there are any changes that the councilors would like to make to those minutes, and if not, according to our policy, I will declare that the minutes of that February, I'm sorry. Yeah. January. Anyway, we're talking about January 25th. I'm sorry, that the minutes of the January 25th meeting are accepted as redistributed on February 5 of this year. We move on then to our consent and action calendar. And we have three items on the consent and action calendar tonight. And that would, first one is on page 13 of your packet, and that would be a facility use request that has been approved by the Parks and Recreation Commission for Laconia Little League for use of facilities at Opechee Park during the 2016 Little League season. This is a repeat request, no changes from the previous year, and a motion would be in order to approve this request from Laconia Little League. So moved. Councilor Bolduc makes that motion, seconded by Councilor Bear. Any discussion? All those in favor approving the request of Laconia Little League, please raise a hand. We have six votes in the affirmative, and that request is approved. Next up, on page 15 of your packet, is a request, again, approved by the Parks and Recreation Commission from the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation to hold a fundraising event. And that is a walkathon that they're going to focus on Opechee Park on, where's the date on that one?
May 22nd.
May 22nd, Sunday, May 22, 2016. Again, this is a repeat request, and a motion would be in order to approve this request from the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation. Moved by Councilor Bolduc, seconded by Councilor Bear. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. We have six votes in the affirmative, and that motion is also approved. Lastly, we have a request from the Simpson Dowling 5K Race. The Simpson Dowling, and that is a, for information that's not in your packets, then this is a repeat request that has been approved in the past. This is a scholarship fund set up through the Kiwanis Club and the Lakes Region Scholarship Foundation, which we just honored. Most funds set up through the foundation are restricted to residents of Laconia, Belmont, and Guilford, and graduates of Laconia High School, Guilford, and Belmont High School. And one thing I would call your attention to, councilors, is starting on page 18, you will note that this is our first application to come to us using the new form, and that we had asked for a new and different form to be, to have more information about what actually is going to happen and that sort of thing, and so this is our first opportunity to view an application on that new form. And so this event would be held on June 26, 2016, and it is a giant steeplechase 5K, including all of facilities apparently at Opechee Park, including the Cove and the Smith Track. So a motion would be in order to approve this request for the Simpson Dowling 5K Steeplechase Race.
Moved.
Motion by Councilor Bolduc, seconded by Councilor Bear. Any discussion of that request? All those in favor, please raise a hand. We have six votes in the affirmative, and that request has also been approved. Next up, we have citizen comments for matters not on the agenda. This is the appropriate place in the agenda for anyone who has joined us tonight to approach the council and speak on any item that is not anywhere on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone that's with us tonight who wishes to address the council in that area? Anything that's not on tonight's agenda? Okay. Next up, we have a number of interviews. Interview season here. Councilors, those are in your packets, starting on page 21. First up, we have Elizabeth Betty Ballantyne. She is seeking reappointment as a full member of the Putnam Fund to a five-year term, which would expire at the end of March of 2020. There is one regular position available on the Putnam Fund Board at this time, and Ms. Ballantyne is the only applicant. So I'll bet you here earlier. Betty, if you could come forward, please. Welcome, if you could use either microphone, and just identify yourself and where you live, and we would ask that you simply tell the, tell the council why you would seek reappointment.
Okay. My name's Betty Ballantyne. I've been a resident of Laconia on Thirty School Streets since 1977, at a mere age of twenty-three, so go ahead and do the math. But I was introduced to the Putnam Fund as a young adult woman raising a family in Laconia, whereas we found it a great place to bring the children for programs, and I still believe that, and we still are working towards introducing our youth in the programs. We have Odsbarkins in the school system this spring, and working a program with the children with humility, and, you know, helping people to be aware of bullies, you know, as well. And Odsbarkins does memorize the children. So we really like to start the children first and foremost, and we're always working and engaging many of the community to be more involved, and we're trying different genres, different programs, lectures, entertainment, educational programs, as well as with the Laconia Library. We have a very cohesive board, there's a five-member board, and they all bring much to the small table that we have. My involvement has been in the marketing of the programs, the minutes of the program, of our meetings. We've set some good processes in place that is more helpful, I think, to the council and to our city manager, so they have an idea of what our intentions are and what we intend to have for programs. I truly believe in it, it's such a gift to the community that we have this, and I'd like to be able to continue on for another five-year term, and hope that I'm able to. I would love to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Ballantyne? Councilor Bear.
Hi. Thank you first for all of your service. You've been a long time. How many programs are we doing now?
We, now that we certainly have a more consistent budget, I would say we do about a half a dozen programs within the year, just programs, that being the Putnam Program.
Has that fallen off in the last year or two?
No, no, it hasn't. I mean, generally, we tend to have one program in September, October, November, December, and usually in the spring, and March we'll have programs. We've talked, we've had a couple summer programs, but when you get into May and June and the busyness of graduations and Mother's Day and good weather, people want to be outside, and we've had good successes with outdoor programs, in particular, Fourth of July. We've done some Fourth of July shows as well. It's, we've talked about more, but we also need to have, again, being a small board, we all need to be present to be able to do so. And that doesn't include the library, the monies we give to the library when they ask for programs and propose for programs. We've had some at Woodside Commons, along with the middle school as well, and all the great schools in town we've had throughout the year, whether it's mostly music programs, educational, hands-on for the children. Thank you.
Councilor Hamel.
I just want to thank Betty for her hard work and dedication to the city and bringing all the great programs that you and your board.
Thank you.
Bring for us to be entertained. There's a lot of good shows, I've been to a lot of them, and enjoyed every one of them, so thank you for all you've done.
You're welcome.
I second that.
All right, thanks, hon. Anybody else?
Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. We all would love your input, we do appreciate it, we do encourage it.
Bruce Springsteen would be good.
We'll work on that, Ed. We do have a very big name that we are working on, and we have not released, although if you look in the minutes, you'll see it. But we're just about there on our contract, and it'll be probably one of our largest programs we've had. That'll be in September, so keep watch, keep watch for it. We do have a Facebook page as well to let people know, and of course, it's just another way of staying in touch. We encourage the city newsletter as a great means of seeing what's happening in the city, along with the Putnam programs, with everything else that's on, going on. Nancy does a fabulous job in the city newsletter, so keep watch for September program. Great.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's been.
Before we get to our next interview, I'd like to say for all of you, in case some of you are not gonna stick around, city council policy on appointments is, official policy is that we interview on one night and make appointments on the following, at the following regular meeting. So we will not be making any appointments to any of these committees tonight, they'll be done at the next meeting. It is not necessary for the candidates to attend that second meeting, they're more than welcome to if they want, but it's not necessary. Okay? Next up, we have David Stamps. David is seeking reappointment to the Highway Safety Commission as a public member for a three-year term to expire March of 2018. There is one position available, and Mr. Stamps is the only applicant. Welcome, Mr. Stamps.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Second time up. It's a small position, but the effects are very large. We primarily review grants that the Police Operations Division identifies would allow officers to work overtime. They're generally federal grants. The feds have recently made a change, so that the city share is gonna jump by almost 300 percent, I think, this year. DWI patrols, and generally, they, it doesn't take, costs the city any money. It's all pays for time and a half, plus cars and benefits and everything else, as far as I know. So it's win-win. That's pretty much all that this position does at this point in time.
Any questions for Mr. Stamps?
Thank you.
Welcome, welcome. Thank you all. Okay. Thank you. Next up is Rod Roy. Mr. Roy is seeking appointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a three-year term expiring at the end of March 2018. Two positions are available. Mr. Roy, welcome. Good to see you.
Good evening, councilors. Good to see you. This'll be my third go-around at this. We've done some great things in the past few years, and I'd like to thank George Hawkins and Dave Plurd and Jeff Patterson, all who were mentors to me on that commission. They've all stepped down in the last year, and I've learned so much from them that, you know, Mitch Hamel, who's on it currently, we're hoping to pass that knowledge on to the three new board members that took their places this year, and we're excited about that, and we've got everything moving, we feel, in the right direction, and would like to continue to do so.
Any questions for Mr. Roy? Councilor Hamel.
Just a comment, Rod's a strong member of that board, and I go to quite a few of the meetings, and they have a good commission there, and they work well together, and we have a lot of parks to take care of, and they're doing a good job of doing that, so thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay, that was easy. Thank you. Okay, staying on the subject of Parks and Recreation Commission, we have Arthur M. Kirk, seeking reappointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a three-year term expiring at the end of March 2018. He's applying for the second of the two positions available, and you were just here.
I was just here. Just a couple months ago.
Welcome.
Well, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Well, as you heard, I've just barely gotten my feet wet into the Parks and Rec Commission, but what I've learned already, I'm very excited about, and I feel I really want to, I'd like to continue to learn more and be a part of the decision-making process in this, in this great city. I grew up here, and feel I, like I said, I just want to give back for everything that I've gotten from here, so it's, I have just gotten my feet wet, it's still, still a lot of new stuff, I'm learning a lot of new things, but I really am looking forward to continuing that, so.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Kirk?
Just want to thank him very much for coming.
Thank you.
Questions? Nope? Okay, thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good evening.
Number five on your agenda, Nadine Jordan, I understand is not with us tonight, and that interview is being postponed until our next meeting. So next up, we have Glenn Smith, who is seeking reappointment to the Library Board of Trustees to a three-year term expiring March 2018. Currently, there are two alternate positions and two regular positions available on the library. Mr. Smith, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors. As I say, I'm seeking reappointment to the Library of Trustees. This'll be my second three-year term, and all I can say is that as a, having grown up here in Laconia, I have a very, excuse me, I have a very bad cough in my throat, have a very strong commitment to the library that goes back many years, and it's been exciting to work with a great Board of Trustees and a fantastic staff there to keep the institution of the library going so that our kids and their kids can have that same experience that we all have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Smith?
Thank you for coming forward.
Anyone?
Doing a great job.
Councilor Bowden's?
Thank you.
I'm sorry?
I told him he was doing a great job, and thanks.
He's doing a great job. Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I guess that's it then, thank you. And lastly, we have John Moriarty. Mr. Moriarty is seeking reappointment as a full member of the Library Board of Trustees to a three-year term expiring March 2018. Again, there are two regular positions available, and we have two applicants. Welcome, Mr. Moriarty.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city councilors. Thank you for your time and consideration this evening. Yes, that's correct, my name is John Moriarty, and I am seeking reappointment as a full Board of the Library Trustees, and I think Mr. Roy and I had some of the same speech writing done today, so I'll just say that in my notes, I wanted to thank Bob Selig, who's chaired the board the entire time that I've been on it, which was, I think, my late twenties that I joined the board, and I think I was involved with the Building Committee a couple of years before that, and in case you haven't noticed, I'm no longer in my mid-twenties, so I really appreciate the group that we've worked with, and Mr. Selig has certainly given me a lot of latitude to be productive with the Library Board and make a difference, and he's also not been shy about reining me in when at least he thought I was not going in the right direction, whether I was or not, so I'm grateful for that opportunity to serve our city, and yet, it also strikes me, particularly in the last year, that there is an absolute need for succession planning, and as a, as a member of the board that served for a total of some, in some capacity, nearly seventeen years, I think it really is important to fill our alternate positions and begin the immersion process and to continue the good work that we've done. You're probably aware that on November 5, 2005, I think the year was, we opened the new addition to the library, and my goodness, that's been ten years. So it forces me to reflect on my own activity and say, well, we did a lot. We did a lot of good work, we built some solid programming, we increased the library usership to 130-some-odd thousand visits a year. That's a, that's a good use of a city facility, but kind of the old question, what have you done for me lately? And I don't have the answer to that, but I had the opportunity to listen to the city council's strategic planning session that happened last Friday, and there are a couple of, so I went and looked at the library and thought to myself, are there things that we, as one of the library departments, though we're governed by an independent board, can do together? And these are some of the conversations that we had on the street following that. So just to throw them out, as a conversation starter, regionalization. The library in Laconia is probably, probably one of the strongest in the regions. It's one of the older ones in the region, and it certainly attracts users from all over, but are there services that we can bulk together? We started using New Hampshire downloadable books, we've been doing interlibrary loans forever, the hoopla service. All of those are great, fantastic services, but perhaps there are ways that we can share those resources and thus share the costs in a more meaningful way, and I'm convinced that if we think about the other things that we do, that there are also regionalization practices that we can participate in. As it comes to your topic of economic development, I want to share with you a topic that I was asked by a constituent to bring forward about the 30-million-word gap, and if you're not familiar with this, there's very conclusive evidence from the University of Chicago that by age three, between economic strata within the study, that by age three, there's a 30-million-word gap in exposure, the number of words that are heard. And of course, that translates to cognitive thinking and growth and real achievement gap. If you want to really develop a productive economy and a productive citizenry, as I think you guys are working in that direction, of increasing the population and the top half of the median income for the city, this might be one thing to look at, and there are, there are programs, for example, with the American Academy of Pediatrics, using the three Ts to talk to your children. Don't just say, "Don't do that, stop doing that," but tune in, talk more, and take turns. There's little pedometers that they're giving out, the AP with the American Library Association, that actually measure the number of words that the wearer are wearing and the number of words that are responded to, so don't think you can just plop your kid in front of the TV wearing one of these things, it won't count the TV words, but real, meaningful dialogue. I don't know that it makes sense for the library to get involved with this, but it certainly seems to me it's an opportunity to help a long-run economic plan, to build a much more competent and achieving citizenry here in Laconia. And lastly, I'm not sure that you use this word, but differentiation from Laconia, I think, is something that Laconia Library has been doing for a while, but we need to do more of it. So for example, we've adopted recently, through our newly-formed STEM Committee, a new program on coding, and that's, that's important, but I really think we need to make it into a way- And that's, that's important, but I really think we need to make it into a first-class program. Think about the fact that in the future, it's likely that we're going to have more dark factories, factories without windows, without lights, because there are no employees. The manufacturing will likely be done by robots. What we are going to need as a society, people who are competent and capable of programming those robots. And I see no reason why Laconia, through, through some kind of robotics coding program, perhaps in conjunction with the school system, should the school system actually develop a curriculum for this. But there are some opportunities for Laconia Public Library to perhaps lead the way and forge those partnerships. So in short, I, I would like to continue for another little while anyway in the Library Board, if you'd permit me to, and see how I can participate in those conversations and perhaps do something meaningful. So I'd be delighted to entertain any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Moriarty?
Thank you. Thanks for all you've done, John.
Thank you all.
Okay. Thank you. Again, we'll take these appointments up at our next meeting. Next on the agenda is communications and correspondence, and would call the councilor's attention to two items in your packet, page 43 and 45. We have two letters on the subject of the Davis Place property that's, we're having a public hearing on tonight. One of them is from the Downtown Tiff Advisory Board chaired by Pat Wood, and the second is from the Laconia Planning Board chaired by Warren Hutchins. And since we're going to get to that hearing in a minute here, I would, I would suggest that if we're going to discuss these or whatnot, that we can do so at that point in time. And would ask that the clerk include those two letters, please, in the testimony for that public hearing. And I don't know if there's, there is a representative of the Tiff Board here tonight. I know, I see one. And I also saw Mr. Hutchins here tonight, so they may well want to address this issue when it comes to the public hearing. Okay, so we'll set those aside. Next up on the agenda is review of zoning in the Weers Beach Commercial Resort Zone. As many of you know, for the last couple of meetings and running through the end of this month, the council is setting aside a portion of each meeting for four successive meetings to allow testimony on the subject of zoning in the commercial resort area of the city, with particular emphasis on the Endicott Street corridor running from the, the old Surf Coaster property at the corner of White Oaks Road to the Meredith Town Line. Is there anyone here tonight who wishes to address the council on that subject? No? Okay.
Nope. I'm here.
There's one back there.
There is one? I'm sorry. Okay. Mr. Poirier.
My name is Russ Poirier. I'm a broker, realtor. I'm also a site selector. I've been a site selector for such companies as Cumberland Farms, 33 Stores for Pizza Hut, 37 Stores for Dunkin' Donuts, et cetera. And I've been, I've been in a dilemma about the Weers because I don't know what people want. I know what the demographics will tell me, but as I speak to people who know the Weers, I've been here for 40 years, and I remember the Weers when it was bustling and when it attracted tourism a lot more than that's today. And I've come up with a few conclusions, if you bear with me. The, the problem with the Weers is, first of all, Bike Week is, is a huge attraction. It still attracts 300,000 bikers in that Bike Week. The situation with the Weers in my demographics is, a lot of them go to Guilford, a lot of them stay in Alton, a lot of them stay in Center Harbor, a lot of them stay in Meredith, of course. So the demographics that you people are looking at are not the same demographics as I look at, because demographics that you look at are the trip, trip boards, the vendor fees, the time people stay, et cetera. It doesn't mean anything. They're finding a way to spread out. You've got to bring them back to the Weers, in my view. The reason they're spread out is lodging. They have no lodging. They fill up pretty quick. Secondly, the state of New Hampshire says that in the winter months, in the summer, in the winter months, the traffic count that goes by the Weers Beach sign is 7,000 cars per day. So I get in my car, and I go to the Moran Building, and I talk to the engineers, and I say, do you count Scenic Drive? And they say, oh, no. Do you count Endicott Street East? Well, not in our Route 3 demographics. So the demographics of 7,000 cars per day are minimal by state standards, when in fact the demographics that go by the Weers in the winter months are 11,000 cars a day. If you couple Scenic Drive, Endicott Street East, Roller Coaster Road, that direction, all of those people eventually go by that sign, that direction. In the summer months, the state of New Hampshire says that only 11,000 cars a day go by the Weers Beach sign. But the same demographics apply. They don't, they don't count the people who park, you know, say, within two miles, or say, let's say they park at the Margate, and they take a shuttle, or they go, they go with friends. They don't, they don't figure those demographics in, because all they have is their trip line that's across the highway. I guess my point is, the, the city of Laconia has really stepped up to the plate, and we have the finest amenities in the entire state. We have the largest beach, and we keep adding to it. We keep improving on it. It has lifeguards, it has parking, it has, you know, it has income. We have the most beautiful boardwalk, in my view, in the, at, at the Weers. We have the Mount Washington. We have the railroad. We have all these amenities for these resorts to say, gee, we don't have to build these things. You know, if you look at surrounding towns, they've all had to build their own amenities. Meredith, Center Harbor, Wolfboro, the Weers has them all. So if I can get off my soapbox, I'm going to end with one thing. The city has to find someone who will promote the Weers and will promote it for development. There is over 100 acres in immediate circle around that sign that is ripe for development. The problem is, part of it is zoning. You know, zoning allows for certain uses that in, in my view, and maybe in your view, should not be allowed. Take a hard look at the zoning at the Weers Beach, because you're discouraging growth by promoting junk. If you zone for junk, you're going to get junk. You know, you're not going to get a development to come in and do a, a high-end resort if there's a trailer park next door, or if there's a campground proposed next door, or even anything of that nature is allowed next door. So I think you have to take a hard look at the zoning, really get on, really be a cheerleader for the Weers, and I think they'll come. Tax relief is, is certainly a consideration that the board could discuss and consider. There are any number of things that, you know, if you, if you tell the developer, well, that's fine, but we need these capital improvements, the developer's going to say, I'm sorry, I'm out of here. You know, they have a lot of opportunities. And I think the Weers, the Weers Beach area is the prime opportunity right now. Everything else has been used up. When you drive up from Massachusetts, you think about the state of New Hampshire. Weers Beach is right smack in the center of the state of New Hampshire. The Hampton Beach has just spent $33 million in revitalizing Hampton Beach, because they have had the same problem as the Weers. When you think about New Hampshire, and six, over 67% of tourists that come to New Hampshire come from our state, and mostly from our southern border, although a lot of them come from our northern border. But when you think about New Hampshire, and you think about the White Mountains, what do you think of as far as lodging? You think about Mount Washington Hotel, right? And its red roof. If you go to North Country, where do you think about it? You think about the balsams, and its red roof. When you go to the seacoast, where do you think about it? You think about the Wentworth, and its green roof. But the point is, the, all of these developments, the ones that, the last three that I mentioned, all were subsidized by state, federal, local monies, economic development, tax relief, things of these, this nature, that if you called me and said, we can offer tax relief, then I can go to my same developers who shied away from the Weers and say, hey, I can offer you tax relief. If I build a 100,000-square-foot building, and it houses a Walmart, as an example, and it was on a dead piece of land, it was paying $3,000 to $4,000 in taxes, Walmart comes along with a 100,000-square-foot building, and now is paying $16,000 in taxes, just as an example. But then Walmart fails, and Walmart leaves, and TJ Maxx comes in and leases that building. My point is, the building, empty or full, is still deriving revenue for the town, you know? So I, I hope you will look hard, long and hard at the zoning, because there are restrictions in the zoning that developers will walk away from in a heartbeat. Thanks for your time.
Anyone else on the subject of Weers Beach area zoning, commercial resort zoning? Okay, we have two public hearings tonight. So much paperwork here. Okay. First up is a public hearing scheduled for tonight on Resolution 2016-02, a proposed resolution relative to accepting and expending donations in the amount of $500 from the Spinnaker Cove Yacht Club for the Black Brook Geographic Study. Notice of this public hearing was made in the Friday, January 29, 2016 edition of the Laconia Daily Sun. It was also published, posted, I'm sorry, at City Hall, at the Gale Memorial Library, the Laconia Community Center, and the offices of the Laconia School District. Is there anyone in attendance tonight who wishes to address the City Council on the issue of accepting and expending a donation in the amount of $500 from the Spinnaker Cove Yacht Club for the Black Brook Geothermic Study? Not all at once here. No one. Okay. I want to declare the hearing open and closed at the same time, and that would be at the Next up on the public hearing schedule is a public hearing on a proposal to declare all or a portion of property located on Davis Place in Laconia, identified by parcel tax map as parcels 412-60-59 and parcel 426-60-22 as surplus property. Notice of this public hearing was made in the following editions of the Laconia Daily Sun in accordance with Section 183.7b of the City Code, January 28, 29, 30, February 2, 3, 4, 5, a total of seven postings. Additional postings were made at City Hall, at the Gale Memorial Library, the Laconia Community Center, and the offices of the Laconia School District. Parcel 59 consists of 1.7 acres of open green space and an asphalt parking area of approximately 40,000 square feet. Parcel 22 consists of .16 acres of undeveloped and vacant land, parts of which contain a wooded area that lies within the wetlands buffer of Jewett Brook. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council tonight on a proposal to declare one or both of these parcels as surplus property?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors, Mr. City Manager, and professional staff. I would like to submit a motion of the Planning Board before the City Council. February 2, 2016, the Laconia Planning Board at its regular meeting voted to authorize the Chairman of the Planning Board to appear at the public hearing. Notice for February 8, 2016, where the City Council of Laconia is considering a request to declare parcels 412-60-59 and 426-6022 as surplus property, as Davis Place. As the City of Laconia's Planning Board is in the process of updating the master plan, and that the City has committed major funding to the improvement of the downtown district, the Colonial Theater is, project is a major example, it is premature to divest a major portion of real estate in the downtown area that could support these plans. There are other possible uses for the citizens of Laconia and their guests, which would add to the quality of life and economic development for the city. The two parcels are very level, with excellent views of a major brook and the river. Currently, there are walkways on the site and a very large, level, paved parking lot. This property is a potential major extension of the River Walk, parks for the residents of the area and the city, and a parking lot that can be a satellite facility for the parking downtown and a possible park and ride. The surrounding area is heavily residential, with many properties being multi-units with small lots. On Davis Place is also a very large residential building known as Scott Williams. On the other side of the brook is a nicely appearing apartment building, Victoria Apartments. These city residents would have their neighborhood improved by the attention to cleaning this property by the city. It is the request of the Planning Board that these two properties not be declared surplus at this time, by a vote of the Planning Board on February 2, 2016, and included in the legal record of this meeting. Respectfully for the Laconia Planning Board, Warren Hutchins, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Moriarty.
Hi. My name is Lloyd Wiley. I live and I own an apartment house on 64 Davis Place. Unfortunately, we had a tragic fire two years ago, and I want to thank the City and all the departments and everybody for their cooperation to help me rebuild the building, especially the Fire Department and the Police Department. I think they're the best in the state. I have a problem with a little piece of land that I would like to purchase, part of that lot, 59, that really would not hurt the city in any manner if they kept the parking lot, which they want, the access to the bridge. And the, the property that I want is directly adjoining my property, roughly about 75 feet to the brook, which is the wetland buffer, and it may run into about 125 feet to the river. It is a wayside for every different type of person that goes down there, does drugs. It's a high-problem area. I'm sure that the chief could tell you that, how many calls he gets, he doesn't have enough men and manpower to take care of the area. Mr. Bean wants to clean up one area where there's a big problem, which is, wouldn't hurt the city to divide that little piece of property in the little piece of property that I'd like to purchase. I put two offers in, one for the complete lot, which I heard that they wanted to sell the complete lot, but the main... the complete lot, but the main concern for me is buying Proposal A, the little piece of land that is, it's a dumping ground, it's a drug ground. I would like to clean it up and keep it proper. Nice for the kayakers going up and down the river, for the attending property, Victoria Woods, and also so that I don't have to look out my backyard, my girlfriend doesn't, or any of my tenants have to look out and watch people out there urinating, all kinds of things that I don't want to really say, and it's just, it's just a big problem area. And I would like to clean it up and make it a better part for the City, put it on the tax pa, tax map. And it would only make sense, the little piece of property that I would like to divide from Lot 59 would only benefit the City adjoined with my property, where that little piece could never be developed with all the lot lines. Adjoining the other part of the Lot 59 with a parking lot and the access going over the bridge would be good for the City to keep. But if they wish to sell the whole property, I would be interested in buying that, other than the piece that Mr. Bean would like to buy. But I would like to improve it, put it on the tax map, and make it a nice area for everyone in the homes that I have created. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Harry Bean, I'm from Guilford. We own a piece of property, 32 Davis Place, and the property that I wanted to purchase is, is next to the brook. It's wetlands, it has trees and vegetation, and can't be used for anything. The only reason that I wanted is pretty similar to the gentleman that spoke before me. You know, there's a lot of problems out there. I've called the Police Department on a number of occasions, people out there selling drugs on the bridge, and the same other things he mentioned. This past Saturday, I was down there taping sheet rock in the house, and I looked out the window just in time to see this little guy about, about that big, I'd say he's probably eight, maybe, somewhere around there, about that big. He was climbing down one of those trees. The trees are eight to 10 inches in diameter, and they're on an angle like this here. They've been broken away by wind, weather, something, from like a cluster. I would estimate that that tree probably weighs somewhere above 2,000 pounds, I've done some cutting wood. If that tree came down on that kid, there'd be a bigger problem than whether or not there's a diamond mine over there, or whatever somebody seems to think is over there. When I came here, I thought I was going to be fixing a problem. At this point, there's several people here that think I'm causing one. I think a bunch of you know who I am and the fact that I would not cause one. If there are any other questions on this, I'd be, most of yous I've already spoken to, there's people out here, maybe don't know the whole story, but, does anything else?
We'll be taking this up again under, under old business tonight. Anyone else? Mr. Sawyer.
Yes, my name's Ken Sawyer, represent the City of Laconia Riverwalk Advisory Board, and we recommend that the City retain control and ownership of the proposed properties for future development for Riverwalk access. That particular section of trail is an important connection on the east side to the Rau Trail and on the west side to a connection at the bridge next to the Laconia Spa. And all of that information is detailed in the letter that we addressed to you. Thank you.
Councilor Vera has a question for you.
Yes, your letter from the, your letter from Downtown TIF Advisory Board, written by Patrick Wood, asking us not to declare it as surplus. I just wonder why TIFF has the right to have anything to say about it as you're not in the TIFF district. Davis Place is not included in the TIFF district, so why are you getting into Davis Place?
The, that section of property is, we've looked at that as part of the connections to the Rau Trail and the pedestrian pathways through the city, and we feel that's an important piece. It holds, our feeling is that the, the trail should follow the river as often as possible and not have to deviate away from the river, and although it's certainly up to you to decide what you want to do with the property, we wanted you to be aware that we are looking at that section of property that the City owns as another potential connection point. And I know that the City Council has, has on many occasions spoken out that they would like to see connections of trails so that people can go from one area of the city to another. So the letter to you is to, to make you aware of why we feel like it may be important for the City to retain the, the property, and to point out that, that particular section of property affords not only potential for a Riverwalk to, to be built along that section, but water access, there's a, there's a beach that's used by local residents now that is not town-maintained.
Not on the Davis side property.
But...
Sorry, what, what beach you talking about?
It's...
Over by Victoria.
It's, I believe it's unofficially called Bottle Beach by the, the local residents.
Go down there, you'll see the bottles.
But...
On Lot 59?
But, but...
Across the brook.
You know, what it is today is, is potentially not what it could be in the future.
How about the future of the people who are there now, taxpayers that would like to improve their, not only their businesses and their homes, but increase taxation to the City, which hasn't been getting anything on it for years? Don't people have as much right?
That, I guess that would be, that would be for you, for you to decide. The, 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 the point from the, from our position was just to point out that there was, there was possible potential in the future for, for improvements.
So are you speaking of, from, from your group's perspective, I just want to understand? So Lot 59 has frontage on the river. Presumably, if a path was going to go through there, it would be on Lot 59, is that?
Lot 59, I believe, and I don't have the, obviously I don't have it in front of me, but we're talking about the lot that the, there's a small pedestrian bridge that crosses over, and that's where the Derky Brook flows down through.
Yes, that's Lot 59.
Yes. When we, Jewett Brook, sorry. When we, when we looked at that property, as you cross over the, as you cross over the bridge, there's, what we had discussed is that there's two potential pathways for the continuation of the Riverwalk. To the left, as you come across the bridge, would take you down along the water, and to the right would take you to the roadway, and to the left, we thought about...
Davis Place roadway?
To the Davis Place roadway.
So back up a half a step.
Okay.
All right, so I'm, I'm on Church Street.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and the Riverwalk's going to come out and join Church Street by the bridge there, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm there. How do I get from there to the bridge off Davis Place?
You're going to go...
In terms of the vision you're looking...
Right, you're gonna, there will be some sidewalks that will, would take you, you take a left at the Riverbank House and would go down through the...
Riverport there?
Right, and then we'd...
On the street itself?
On the street itself, and then there would be a, at some point, a connection to the river on city property. The crossing at the bridge, and then a possible turn to the left for a small pocket park or picnic area.
On Lot 59.
On Lot 59, and then to the right would be the continuation to the roadway, and then the Riverwalk would continue along Davis Place to the next potential connection point, and then across the Irwin property to the Rau Trail.
All right, so it would hook up with the Rau Trail on Messer Street then?
Correct.
Is that the vision?
Yes.
Do we have an easement on the Irwin property along the river there?
I don't believe we have an easement at this time.
Mr. Moriarty is nodding his head in the affirmative.
Yeah, I thought we, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump in, but since you're asking. John Moriarty, President of Main Street Initiative, my understanding is, I think we do have three easements in that section. Number one is, we have one across Victoria Woods, I think we have the second one across the, part of the Irwin property, and a third one on what I think of as the Public Service of New Hampshire property where the Brownsfield Cleanup Project was done. So there's a, there's a series of established dashes that are missing a couple of pieces in this Lot 59, from my understanding is, is one of those.
Thank you, John.
So would the, so you have an easement from Victoria Woods?
Yes.
But the plan isn't to put the pathway along the river at Victoria Woods, from what I'm listening to?
We really have not, that isn't a section that we're currently working on, but it is something that we have looked at.
Because if you're going to come down to the bridge, then you're going to skip around Victoria Woods. You'd already be past Victoria Woods by the time you got to the bridge.
And go down Howard Street.
The footbridge. Right?
Yeah, that's right. That's, that, that's right. So what you would get is the access that...
Microphone, please.
The access that they're talking about is, once you get to the bridge, in order to access any of the right-of-way's, whether you're in Irwin property or PSNH, you'd have to come back over to Davis Place and, and walk down along the road there. The access for, if we kept Lot 59, or a portion of it, or however we decide to do it, that would be just sort of like a, a little park that you could end in because you can't get around the point along the river, you have to go in, you have to go back up to Davis Place.
Yeah, there is a section at Davis Place that we would have to use existing sidewalks and roadways to finalize that connection to the easement at the Irwin property.
Councilor Hamilton, did you have a question, or Councilor Bullock, I'm sorry?
Yes. The parcel that the Beans are looking for doesn't go anywhere near that water. Once you get over the bridge, you're going to be going to the left. That little piece that you're talking about, you can't do anything on it. You can't dig it, you can't fill it, you can't do anything.
Are you talking about to, the, the piece that's to the right of the bridge as you crossed over?
22.
It's kind of behind you, back to the right.
You don't even go near it.
Where the woods are.
Mm-hmm. You can't do anything on it. So I don't know why you're protesting this one because you're out in left field on this one.
Well, I guess we feel that the potential use for the greater public...
They can't do anything on it.
We, we don't know what we can do on it yet until we, we, well, I guess that'll be for you to decide. I, our recommendation is that you retain control of the property for, for the future expansion of the Riverwalk.
Can I just comment on this?
We've already gone through it.
Can I just comment on this?
Okay. Let's, do we have any further questions for this gentleman?
No.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sawyer.
You're welcome.
Councilor Bowles.
I won't, part of the confusion or the problem is that when we originally decided to hold a public hearing to declare this land as surplus, we had before us the one proposal for Harry Bean, which is a small strip of land on the other side of the Derky, Derky Brook.
Jewett Brook.
And we also had a proposal by Mr. Wiley for either the entire purchase of 59 or a partial purchase of 59 in terms of his concerns, and we couldn't get that on the agenda because of the timing of it for our last meeting. So what people are commenting on is the notice that we put in the paper that says we're going to sell all of David, all of land on Davis Place, we're considering to declare it all surplus, but that was not the narrow issue that we dealt with at the last City Council meeting, and that was whether, that narrow strip of land. So I just say that for clarification because...
But to sell part of the land, we have to declare all of it surplus.
Yeah, yeah, so you know, it's like, we're in a position like, we're trying to sell off Davis Place wholesale, but I don't think we are, but I just want to clarify how it got here.
Okay, would anyone else like to offer testimony to the City Council here? Mr. Wiley?
Yes. I would just like to point out about the Riverwalk. It, it's a good project, but if you looked at the Riverwalk, the way they tend to propose, or the only way it could go, it would go down to River Court, which is a very narrow street, it's about as wide as a driveway. No sidewalks, and you're proposing people to walk down this street. When you get over to Davis Place, there's no sidewalks. It goes onto Hudson Street, which is a narrow street that has no sidewalks. It would be, it would be dangerous to protesting inside. I'm not sure, you know...
So you're suggesting the pathway is impractical?
Yeah, yes. Just thought I'd point that out, thank you.
Mr. Moriarty.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. John Moriarty speaking on behalf of, no, as President of the Main Street Initiative, and for the record, I have not, I have not inquired as to what the membership or constituency of Main Street thinks about this, and I am not authorized to speak, repeat that, not authorized to speak for anyone, but I, since I heard some of the questions, I thought I would shed what little insight that I can give to you. It's interesting that Mr. Sawyer introduced himself as a member of the River Access Coalition. I, I suspect he probably meant to introduce himself as a member of the Downtown TIFF Board. The, the history of that, of course, is that the TIFF, the Downtown TIFF entity, and specifically its legal footprint essentially grew directly out of the Downtown Main Street Initiative. There are some very small differences, so I can't tell you exactly what they are, but essentially one begat the other. The Downtown Main Street Initiative legal footprint was specifically designed to include 266 Union Avenue, the Scott and Williams Building, which is on the north side of Davis Place. So I don't know how far west it goes, whether it actually, you know, extends all the way to the Winnebago River or not. But the interesting thing is, of course, the Main Street Initiative, you know, so TIFF grew out of Main Street, Main Street grew out of Mr. Sawyer and others' River Access Coalition. And one of the first things that I did when I joined the Main Street Initiative in a leadership role was ask for, from the City, the documentation of the River Access Coalition. And it did show within, within their footprint, the overall plans and the beginning environmental impact of what the Riverwalk would look like, and it did include these, these dog legs that go up River Street and across what is now Victoria Woods and reconnect over Irwin's back to Messer Street. And so the, the... And so the concept was presented to city council, and you did invest in that as a project, and you, of course, as you know, have been investing it in piecemeal, and it's just now starting to reach critical mass. It's not completely there yet. An example of that, of course, is the widening of the sidewalk on Fair Street, the relocation of telephone poles on Water Street so that that sidewalk could be added and improved. So all of those pieces were part of the original River Access Coalition plan, and I believe the date on that, if you want to look it up, is 2002. But again, I haven't looked at it in two or three years, so I'm a little out of touch. But anyway, I hope that may provide some insight as to where that was going. I'm familiar with the territory. I've walked it. I haven't- I have not drunk any beer bottles and thrown them in the river down there, but it is a gorgeous piece of real estate, and we hear you talk about rising tides, raising all boats, and our- no, my thought on that is that, you know, much like the railroad coming to your community in the 1800s increased the value of your real estate, that a public investment in this kind of property would connect it with downtown, the downtown economy, and make each one of those individual real estate pieces more valuable and rather than improving one or two in the tax roll, improving all of them on the tax roll would have a tremendous economic impact on the city budget. So again, that was just to try and answer your questions, and I'm happy to sit down or answer any others.
Donald Trump in eminent domain.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council on this matter? No one? Okay. For the record, I will declare the public hearing then closed at 12 minutes past eight and remind everyone that we will take this issue up again under unfinished business on tonight's agenda. Next up, we're on to presentations, and tonight we have a presentation from the Stand Up Laconia Organization, and I believe Claire Pearson is present tonight, who's the chairman of that organization. Wow, are we getting presents?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city councilors. Tammy is helping me out here, passing things out. Inside the bags you'll find there are Stand Up Laconia mugs. We hope you use them and think of us often. Thank you for having us here tonight. I do wonder if all of the city councilors- I know some of you are very well aware of Stand Up Laconia and what we're all about, but I don't know if everybody is.
Were we all aware of Stand Up Laconia and what it does and what it is? I think so.
Okay, terrific. So we are here this evening, really what our ask of the city council is, is that we would like you to stand up as our city council with Stand Up Laconia. We are, as we've been speaking about, with the land that you were just speaking about and talking about, people being down there doing drugs and such things, we know it's a significant issue here in our community and certainly in the state of New Hampshire. So what we are hoping is that we meet every fourth Thursday of the month, and I know occasionally we've had somebody from city councils at our meetings, but it is a rarity. We would really like somebody to be there on a more regular basis since this is such an issue for our community. We also meet every Friday at Laconia High School at 8:00 AM, an executive committee, about a group of about 15 of us that come together and have for over two years now. And we would certainly invite any of you to come to that meeting if you're available to learn a little bit more about us and the impact we have had and hope to continue to have within this community. I certainly- I've passed this out. This is our little brochure. It tells you about us, our Facebook page, our website, what our mission statement is. And, you know, we've been really appreciative of such people as the Main Street Initiative have really taken us and working with us. There's just so many aspects in our community that have really kind of embraced where we're about the community. We have all the different sectors of the community that are involved with us. We started out five years ago, Chief Adams, myself, Jim McCollum, and we've grown from a small group of about 20 to over 300. So it's- we came about five years ago, and certainly in the last two years with the heroin epidemic, it seems to have come to the forefront, and people are interested in learning more about us. We are all grassroots, and I can't say enough about the people that are part of this coalition, their dedication, their commitment. So again, we would like you, as our city councilors, to just kind of learn more about us, start to join us, become more involved, and see what we can do as a collective group to really decrease this issue in our community. I do have, at the Laconia High School SAU and different places in town, we have our T-shirts. I would ask if you could, maybe places somewhere in the city hall here, so people know that there are people in Laconia that really do, our community members care about this issue. So I will leave these here. And I have a few people that will speak on behalf of us that have been working with us right here since day one, and certainly am glad to answer any questions you might have from me regarding the coalition. One of the exciting things that we are doing is we are applying for the Drug-Free Community Grant through SAMSA. That is a five-year grant, $125,000 a year. So it's a significant grant. Only 70 communities in the states per year get this grant, so we know it's very competitive, but we feel we stand a pretty good chance. So again, I just thought we are trying to do good things here, and we'd like to continue to work with all of you.
Mr. DeSadi, nice to see you. Welcome.
As you know, a bad penny always returns. I just started with Stand Up Laconia about four or five months ago, and you hear about it in the community and you know it's doing good things, but as we used to say at the school board, the closer you got to us, the more you liked us, the more closer you get to Stand Up Laconia, you realize it's really to make Laconia a better place. And if you look at the mission statement and the vision, it's not focused on just one small problem. It's to make Laconia a better place for everybody. We have for this grant on February- on the 17th of this month, we're having a public meeting to identify what the community sees as problems within the community, and this is all important aspects to get the grant. So I guess the biggest thing is if you could stand up. One thing I saw was at a school board meeting, and they just have a little sign on the wall behind their meeting that says Stand Up Laconia. And I think it would be a message for this body to put out to the community that they would see it every day when the meeting's on, that we are standing up to work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Adams?
Good evening, everybody. As Claire said, I've been involved with Stand Up Laconia for five years now, and I remember the days when we sat over Church Street, me, Lieutenant Lassard, and Jim McCollum, and we might have five or six people. And to where it has become today is truly amazing, and this woman here has given so much of her time to this coalition, along with a lot of other people. Like she said, it's 200 to 300 people strong now. And it started off as Stand Up for a Drug-Free Laconia because of a presentation that the police department did at the school, and parents became concerned about what they've heard. And I think, like Claire said, we're going through another drug epidemic along with many, many other communities throughout this country. But for the police department to have a group of citizens that are there with us, spreading the word, looking to improve the conditions of Laconia, it's a true asset. State senators are familiar with this coalition. Even some of the presidential candidates are familiar with Stand Up Laconia. They've heard about it. It's doing amazing things. I think some of the goals and objectives that we talked about at the strategic planning session the other day go hand in hand with this coalition. The socioeconomic issues we spoke about, the substance misuse, the poverty, and things like that. So I think it's a wonderful organization, and to really be the group that's applying for this amazing grant, which the city of Franklin was awarded several years ago, I think is truly amazing, and that grant can really make a lot of changes and improvements in this community. So I'm very proud of Claire and everybody else that's involved in it, and the police department is honored to be a partner of Stand Up Laconia. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pearson, do we have others coming, or?
I don't know.
Counselor Bear has a question, I think.
How are you funded now?
We are completely- yeah, we're grassroots. We've had a few private donors that have been very generous, giving small donations. And the Citizen Book Fair last year, they chose us, and we raised $3,000 in those two days. So it is- we're not funded by anybody, so this would be a real coup if we could get the grant. And whether or not we do, we will continue to forge along.
We have special items, fun. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else?
And I would say just the two dates on our workshops that are coming up are next Monday, February 15th. That's the one Bob was speaking to, and it's gonna be at the Hewitt Technical Center at Jack's Place. And then the following Monday, February 22nd, will be a follow-up meeting to that. So, and I'll get a flyer out, and I can certainly send it if you'd like some more information.
What time is those?
Six o'clock are those particular two meetings. And again, any 8:00 AM meeting at Laconia High School, we meet every Friday at 8:00 AM, and you're more than welcome to join us.
What is the timing on this grant?
It has to be in- it's January. It came out where you could begin the application, and it's mid-March where it has to get in. So-
The application's already in?
Oh, no, no, we're working on it now. And the two things, the two workshops that are coming up are some of the data that we'll be needing to extrapolate from the community to be able to-
And it will be awarded when?
If we put it in in March, we hear in October of this year, October 2016, whether we have been granted it.
So the soonest anything grant-funded could start would be late in the fall or early next year, that sort of thing?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Councilor Hamel?
If you had the verbal backing of the city council when applying for that grant, would that help you out?
I think it certainly would, yes, yes. One of the things I know that- look, there's many things, I mean, the grants, as you know, a grant's very, very long, but there's the 12 sectors that need to be, you know, they have the mandated things, and that is one of the things. So that would be very helpful to us.
We could ask staff to prepare a resolution that we could adopt at our next meeting. Could we do that?
Yes.
Sure, you could get the pertinent information from Mrs. Pearson or someone else from the organization so we could adopt an official resolution.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
I suspect you would have unanimous support for that.
I would think so.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for coming. Nice to see the red shirts.
Yeah.
I'm not as good as orange, but dinner.
Okay, also on our agenda tonight, councilors, was a presentation from the Happy Tales Dog Park folks, and they are unable to be with us tonight, so we're gonna put that off to a later date. And I would note that in your packet, the information that's pertinent to that presentation goes from-
Forty-eight pages.
I would suggest that we not throw any of that away.
What is it?
It looks like half a grove of trees died for- to get all that information to us.
We're well on our way to clearing out Harry Bean.
So I would suggest that we try our best to keep that packet together so that when they do come back to us, whether it's at the next meeting or a future meeting, we don't have to reprint 48 pages. And that runs all the way through page 126. So page 61 through 126, if you could stash away somewhere, it would be helpful.
Just 106.
106?
Yeah, 126 is the total.
Yes, I'm sorry, 106. 61 through 106.
That way we cut the man.
Okay, mayor's report, I'll be briefed tonight. I just wanted to acknowledge that was mentioned earlier by someone, that we had a goal-setting session for the council last Friday at the new fire station, and lasted about three hours and 15 minutes, and was an excellent discussion, I thought, from my perspective, and want to thank not only all the councilors who showed up. We had 100% attendance and participation, but also the numerous department heads who also attended that meeting and participated and lent their advice and counsel to us, as well as filled in some gaps in information. The session was moderated by a gentleman from the Primex Insurance Underwriters. What do we call Primex?
They're one of the risk pools, municipal risk pools.
Municipal risk pool. And they- one of their folks volunteered to provide that service at no charge to us, and we're appreciative of that. And they are going to get back to us within a couple of weeks here with a full report of that, which will be made public, as well as presented here to the council, and that'll be a working document that we can look at the first draft of and decide whether or not we want to make any changes to it or whatnot. We can also solicit public input at that point in time on that in terms of the kinds of items that we were talking about as goals for the city to try to achieve over the next two years. So again, thank you to everyone who participated in that program on Friday. Committee reports. In the public works area, you should have gotten a memorat- a committee chaired by Councilor Bullock, includes councilors Bear and Bowens, and you now have in your possession, committee members, the report having to do with the one item on your agenda, and that is a proposed speed table on Summit Avenue.
My goodness.
You don't have it?
I got it right here. I can't believe it.
Okay, so it would be appropriate, I think, for that committee to set a work session, a committee meeting in the not-too-distant future to review that proposal and ask questions and make a recommendation to council?
We can do that. What's the next meeting?
22nd. I think we've got one scheduled on the 22nd, but maybe- maybe March 14?
Yeah, March, sounds good.
March 14?
That works.
And how much time would you anticipate?
Whether the sap's running or not.
I guess it depends if there's public input from Butters and stuff, so I guess maybe to do- start at 6:00 would allow time for discussion of it, and then for public comment, probably would be my recommendation.
Is that all right with you, Councilor Bullock?
Like I said, depends if sap's running.
I'm sorry?
If sap's running, I don't know.
So that would be March 14?
March 14, 6:00 PM.
All right, without objection, then, we'll schedule a meeting of the Public Works Committee for 6:00 PM on March 14th to take up the item on their agenda called Proposed Speed Table on Summit Avenue. And tonight, we had a meeting of the Lands and Buildings Subcommittee chaired by Councilor Hamel. Do you have a report, sir?
I do. Had a meeting this- at 6:00 to discuss further advancement on the parking garage project. We had DuBois and King here, the Land and Building members who are here, city manager, Paul Monahan, and discussed the prices on the project. And we have two proposals before us. One of them would be to repair the- and Scott, if you could, if I go astray here, correct me, two proposals. One is Phase 1, and what is it called, anyway? That proposal would be for $820,000. That would be to repair the second deck and not to do any repairs to the ramps. Is that correct? Or the third deck? On both decks, I mean, both ramps. That would repair just the second deck.
Correct.
The second deck and not the third deck. So, it's kind of a-
Including the privately-owned portion of the second deck?
The whole thing.
That price, it would include the whole thing, but whether or not they contribute to it is another thing that's under discussion. To repair it properly, to go through the whole thing, that would be repairing all the decks, the ramps, doing the painting, removing the membranes and pavement on the second level, sealing the top level and fixing structural defects on both of them, which would involve steel and cutting into the cement pads and removing those and repairing that. The project, the total project for that would come to roughly $2 million. There's roughly a, was it $300,000 or $400,000 that would be needed from the owner of the
Private portion?
One-third portion of the parking area on both levels. What it doesn't, go ahead.
About 15%, I think, isn't it?
Yes, on the flip side of that, so it's 2 million for the city portion, the private portion was 290,000. Both of those numbers include a contingency of 10%. And then the combined engineering dollar amount is 120,000. So, it would bring the whole public-private project in its entirety to a little over 2.4 million.
2.4, yep.
And even though there's a line item in there for an exterior stairwell and an elevator, it is not funded at this point. So, it's just there, that we'd be working on the funds, but this deals with structural, drainage, painting, new fireproofing, needed amenities like the facade to keep some of the rain getting in, upgraded lighting, those types of items. But that 2.4 million figure is not inclusive of an elevator or an exterior stairwell at this point. We will work to get those numbers.
Guesstimate on those two?
I've been using $400,000 combined for them, just based on some renderings that were done on some, a couple of staircase options, one back in the mid-to-late 90s and one around 2005, I believe. So, there's been some design slash drawing, but not full-blown scope of work engineered, you know, we can put dollars to. But we do have an elevator shaft in our northern stairwell, which has been, I'll say, temporarily walled off. It's a kind of a permanent walling, but it's been hidden from view. But there is an elevator shaft that-
Since 1974, apparently.
Yes, I mean, obviously, it's been there. Fortunately, working with Bob Derby, he reminded us of it. So, we will be measuring that with a, with an elevator, represented from an elevator corporation to determine if in today's world that shaft meets, something could fit there that would be ADA compliant to meet today's guidelines.
So, you were given two proposals. One is-
Yeah. So, what we're planning to do now is on February 18th, we're going to have a Land and Buildings Committee meeting at 4:00 PM, which needs to be posted and we'll have it here. And that is to finalize a discussion on these two proposals to see what the committee would want to advance to the full council. In the meantime, Scott is going to see if there's any other loose ends that need to be tightened up, but we feel pretty close that this is the numbers. The architect has done a, DuBois and King has done a good job going back. Our Public Works Department went over there, spent several weeks removing fire retardant material from the beams so that they can be exposed, so that the engineer could go over and reassess and come within a, instead of a 30,000-foot estimate, we're pretty certain we're roughly in the, what, the 95% area?
He felt there you, he felt comfortable with the number.
Other than the two that, you know, we haven't looked into, which is the stairway and the elevator shaft, but these numbers are, you know, pretty close.
Okay, so you're going to have another meeting on the 18th at four o'clock?
Eighteenth at four o'clock.
And then we'll come back to council on the 28th?
And what I'd like to do is come back to the City Council and have another Land and Buildings meeting at 6:30 on the 22nd. And at that time, the committee will vote on what to bring to the full council for that evening. Because this would have to go out-
So, we should put this matter under unfinished business then on the agenda for the 18th?
No, if you just leave it, huh?
Right.
Eighteenth for Land and Buildings Committee, also the 22nd for Land and Buildings Committee, and then we'll make it an item for full council on the 22nd.
I'm in the 22nd, I'm sorry. The 22nd, it should be under unfinished business on the 22nd. All right. Okay. All right, so without objection, then, we'll schedule two meetings of the Land and Buildings Committee, one for February 18th at 4:00 PM, one for February 22nd at 6:30 PM. Correct?
Now, does everybody on the council have these two documents?
Yes.
Review them in between times, so you'll know what's involved?
I've got three. One is a sort of grand total for everything.
One of them is two-sided.
You might have one.
One of it's supposed to be the other side, two-sided.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so that's where we stand with that right now. There obviously will be other discussions with the owners and the people that are looking to buy it. Also, I suggested during the meeting is that funding for the project go to the Finance Committee to look at different avenues of coming up with the funds to support the project.
So, when would you anticipate that happening?
Well, it probably doesn't have to be right away, because it would, it's going to-
So, would you be asking on the 22nd, then, to assign this to the Finance Committee?
I think pending the outcome of the vote, if there was support to move it along, then we would want to at least set a time to start exploring options.
Okay.
Sound good? Okay. And that's that for that.
Okay, thank you, Counselor.
You're welcome.
Any other committee reports tonight or committee business? How about liaison reports? Liaison reports tonight? Citizens request to comment on current agenda items. This is a point in the evening when it would be appropriate for anyone to address council who wishes to do so on any matter that is anywhere on tonight's agenda. Items coming up or if you have something new to say, yes.
Well, yeah, I do have something. My name's Harry Bean from Guilford. On the, do you folks have this map?
Yeah.
Well, you come from Howard Street here, and you go right across, right, straight out through there, and you get, you go across that bridge. There's that little bridge down there. That seems to be where the majority of the drug trafficking is, is on that bridge. But at any rate, the property that I want is from the corner of the bridge. That other gentleman there, he said that he wanted to be able to go across the bridge and take a right and come over to Davis Place. While that's exactly, would still be right, exactly intact.
Through Lot 22.
Yes.
Yes.
And that would keep them out of the woods, the wetlands, and so on and so forth. And you know that the other little piece that I want is the piece right here on the corner of the brook, just to kind of even things off there a little bit. It looks kind of stupid on the map. I don't know. You know what I mean? There's a little mark across there, red mark. I guess, I guess that's all, but I do know that that beach is-
Bottle Beach.
Bottle Beach. I don't know who named it, but it was aptly named. There's no doubt in my mind. I know some of the, some of the crew that hangs out over there, and that's why they hang out over there. There's no adult supervision. And I'm not blaming the Police Department. I mean, it's probably a place as big as this room right here, and there's bushes all down the side, so they're really secluded well and they're doing all kinds of crazy stuff over there. I guess that's about all.
All right, thank you. Mr. Wiley?
Yes. Like he says, it's bottle beach, needle beach, it's whatever goes on there. And I would like to clean that up and make it, put it on the tax roll and a decent area for the city to look at in Victoria Woods. They don't have to listen to anything, no swearing, no fights, no problems. And Laconia Police has done an excellent job. They just can't, they know what they're doing down there. They see them before they even get there. They try. They're down there all the time. I can't say enough of them. If we could give them 40 more men, I would give them to them because-
So, for clarification, this so-called beach-
Yes.
Is on your side of the brook?
Yes. And that is the piece that I want. And I have a proposal A and a proposal B. I could go on and on about it, but just clean it up, because there's batteries, they throw gas tanks, they tires, everything in there. It's unbelievable. But also, I gave on the proposal, I do have a problem with drainage from the city. When the way back, when they did the road, they did, redid that parking area, I had Paul Monahan, and then when they were doing it, I also had Bonnet Page and Stone, I had, I think it was Kevin Hayes, Ross Frost and Shemway, all down there. And I told them, it's all draining down towards my property. No, no, no. They said, no, we got it all leveled out going towards the Jewett Brook. It is what it is now. It just keeps draining in my, in my yard, around my yard. And I can't, you know, at one point, before my apartment building had burnt, I brought three trioxes of fill-in to, I had a road in the back, to level that up, because I was having, I was having a regular stream come down there every time it just had a moderate rain. Now, I have it going in the parking area where I have the pavement, it's ruined the pavement. It goes around the back of my garage. My garage is settled so much, the foundation. If I was to purchase this property, I would forego and fix the drainage myself, which I've asked the city to do. But it's at a point where my tenants can't even park. They have to park way over on the side and they can't walk in.
And the drainage is coming from where?
From the, from the city street and the property on Lot 59, the parking area. I have pitches, I think I've given them to all of the council. I would, I would forego any fixing the problems. I would take care of the drainage and fix that myself.
Now, that, that four-car, four-car garage or shed or whatever it is there, that's on city property or your property?
That's on my property. The whole parking area right there is, that's all my property. Goes right over to the wooded area where you can see.
Including the-
And that wooded area is the property that I want to purchase from that one.
Propane tank and that other little shed there, that's on your property still too?
Yes, it is.
So, the city property is heavily wooded back in there?
That's just the wooded area, yes. And that is the piece that I'd like. And again, it's about 75 feet or less to the brook, which is wetland in the buffer area, which couldn't be used in any other development. It would, it would do well on my property if it was a possible for future development. It would only go with, joining with my property. Not that I would, right now, I have any plans. I haven't been able to get my apartment building back in order. I have, still have two empty apartments. Unfortunately, I've had them on the market for six months and the real estate tells me, I've had two different real estate companies, they tell me that nobody wants to move to Laconia. And I disagree with them. I think Laconia's good, it's a good area, and I create homes here, and I would like to create nice homes, not have the homeless, everything else in my backyard. Help the police. Harry Bean would do a good job with that wooded area. We could clean that area up. That's just one less area for problems to arise from. Be cleaning one little bit up at a time, Laconia's going to come back fast. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bean?
The only other thing that I wanted to say is that we're prepared to do this now, I don't know about this gentleman here, but we're prepared to buy this and put this on the tax roll. I don't know exactly what the Planning Board has in mind or how long they've had it in mind or how long it's going to take before they do whatever it is they may have in mind. I know that the property that I want, they can't do anything with it. So, we-
Anyone else wish to address council on any matter anywhere on tonight's agenda? Okay, we're on to the manager's report. Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be briefed tonight, but certainly will take any questions you have, knowing we still have a bit on our agenda. We have two reports that are included in your packet for the first meeting of the month. The first one is the Economic Development Report, starting at the top, looking at the unemployment rate. When you look at the five categories that we track in conjunction with the state numbers, there are Laconia, Belknap County, Concord, Manchester, and the state of New Hampshire as a whole. December of '15 versus same period, December of '14, we're basically a full percentage point better, or the rate, unemployment rate is lower by just about a full percentage point across all five categories compared to where it was in December of '14. So, we're in the high twos or middle twos to the middle threes right now across those five categories that I mentioned. Second page of the report highlights the annualized number we have now for our Consumer Price Index Urban, which is one of the calculations that we use for our tax cap and budgeting purposes. And we ended up for the 12 months and calendar year 2015 with an annualized rate of 0.1%. So, that is what we'll be using when we put together the budget this year as the limitation.
That's 1/10 of 1%.
1/10 of 1%.
Yes. Last year, the number, well, you have all the numbers there, so the annualized numbers going back over the prior six or seven years were, and I'll go from 2014 back, but 1.5%, 1.4%, 1.8%, 3.5%, 1.2%, negative 0.1%, 3.4%, 3.1%, and 2.6%. So, even within the last five years, I'm sorry, I was reading the half years, let me run that through that again to be accurate. I'm sorry, 1.6%, 1.5%, 2.1%, 3.2%, 1.6%, negative 0.4%, 3.8%, 2.8%, and 3.2%. So, over the prior couple of years-
So, that's about $40,000 worth of cap space?
It's a very tiny amount, yes. I have the exact number sitting on my desk, but I think on the city side, if memory serves me correct, it was-
Figuring it roughly.
It was 15,000 and change on the city side, so a number of 40,000 sounds right in the ballpark. If you turn to the Financial and Operational Trends Report, the top number there is the second component of our tax cap calculation. It ties into the net gain in construction value from building permits. And again, the building permit year runs tied in with the assessing year in state law from April 1 to March 31st. So, we are 10 months of the way through the assessing year. We're at just under $29 million. Last year at this time, we were within 300,000 of that, also just under 29 million. Typically, the January, February, March timeframe for pulling building permits is relatively slow, not to say that something can't happen, but at least for budgeting purposes right now, we're targeting a 29 million figure where we sit today, even though we have two months left to go. We certainly will update that number if it warrants. Additional items in the Financial and Operational Trends, both in police and fire and rescue, have both seen an increase in call data when you look at the same period a year ago. We're trending very strongly in our property tax collection. Motor vehicle registration for the fiscal year 2016 continues to run ahead of our projections, and the projections were an increase of $150,000 over the prior year's numbers. We have no new updates on any of the pending grievances that we have out there, no change to note of in the impact fee revenue. There's been no change on page five of the report on any of the expendable trust balances. Boat taxes, we're hopeful for an early spring this year and get some of that revenue rolling in. We encourage people to register their boats here in the city, right here at City Hall as a registered boat agent. We can handle it for you without having to mail it off to the state. You've got the update for the winter storm cost for the month of January. And again, you can see the amount of funds that have been used out of the three components of the winter maintenance budget. One is just the maintenance account, one is outside contractors, and one is for overtime. And you'll note that part of the purchase went for salt and sand. A fair amount of that is, even though we purchased it, has not been used yet, it's sitting in the storage sheds at this point. We'll replenish as needed, including on nights like tonight. So, that will conclude my report. I'm happy to follow up if you have any questions.
I just did some quick math here. I'm, I'll be looking for a nod or a shake from Mrs. Woodman here, but- Woodman here, but I'm guessing that the total cap space is going to be around $600,000, $700,000 for school and city combined?
That is correct.
Which, that's about half what we're used to in recent years or less?
Last year, the numbers on the city side, and they were just a statistical oddity, where the two numbers, based on the CPI and the building construction permit, were both within a few thousand dollars of each other at a quarter of a million dollars. So the two together allowed the cap, the cap allowed an increase of $500,000 on the city portion of the budget last year based on $29 million and a 1.6. We're on track for half of that due to the new construction, and as you said, the 15,000. So just on the city side, we're looking at that 270,000 as a rough number. Again, we still have two months to go on building permit value.
Any questions or comments for the city manager? No? Okay, new business. First order of new business is a first reading on Resolution 2016-03 relative to the acceptance of a Department of Environmental Services Exotic Species Program grant in the amount of $6,646,000. I'm sorry. It's not 6 million. $6,640. We have a request to schedule a second reading and a public hearing on February 22, 2016 during the regular city council meeting relative to the acceptance of this grant. And this grant has to do with the fight against milfoil, as is on page 116 of your packet. On page 117 of your packet is a memorandum and 118 from Dean Anson and Suzanne Perley with regard to the role this plays. And to summarize, as I understand it, we're talking about a total cost for diving operations for this calendar year of $16,600 to cover Pickrell and Molten Coves on Pogus Bay and Langley Cove. It's for a total of $16,600 to be spent, $6,640 of that from DES, $4,980 to be paid by residents of Langley Cove, and $4,980 to be, to come out of the city milfoil fund. So the first order of business would be, would be germane to have a motion to waive the reading of Resolution 2016-03 in its entirety, according with Council Rule 29F, paragraph 1. Seconded by Counselor Bear, seconded by Counselor Hamel. All those in favor of moving a reading of this resolution in its entirety and read by title only, please raise a hand. We have six votes in the affirmative that motion carries. Any questions on this before we get to a motion? Questions or comments? Okay. Motion would be in order, then, to move a first reading of a Resolution 2016-03 relative to authorizing the city manager to accept a donation on behalf of the city from the Department of Environmental Services Exotic Species Program grant for use in Langley, Molton, and Pickrell Coves off Pogus Bay in the amount of $6,640 as presented, and to schedule a public hearing on this matter for February 22, 2016 during the regular council meeting. Do you have that motion? Counselor Bullock, seconded by Counselor Doyle. Any discussion of that motion? Alls in favor of approving this resolution on first reading, please raise a hand. We have six votes in the affirmative, and that resolution is adopted on first reading and a hearing is scheduled for our next meeting. Okay, next up, referring to page 120, is acknowledgment of an offer for the purchase of property on Davis Place identified by parcel tax map 412-60-59 from Lloyd Wiley. And for the record, Mr. Wiley is offering the city $3,500 for a portion of Lot 59 that he has described at tonight's meeting, or an alternate proposal to buy the entire lot for $20,000. Mr. Wiley, did I read that incorrectly?
It was still a, for the second offer, was for a portion, another portion, a bigger portion of 59.
Minus the part that Mr. Bean wants, is that...
Minus that part, plus minus the bridge and a little piece of land on the other side of the bridge that adjoins with Victoria Woods, which would still give the city a right-of-way through, over the bridge, through Lot 22.
Okay, that's, what he's talking about is shown on the map on page 123.
I had a plan A, off of A and then off of B.
So the first proposal for $3,000 is the blue markings on page 122, that map. And the second option for $20,000 is shown on, the blue hashing on page 123. And that would include the parking lot, the second one, right?
Yes.
The paved parking lot?
Yes.
Okay. So we've already had a hearing tonight on whether we want to declare that property B surplus, and that is coming up as item two under unfinished business. So we wish to discuss this second offer at this point in time, or wait and take both up at the same time? What's the council's pleasure?
Well, you can't accept an offer if you haven't got surplus property. So we have to deal with...
Right, but we don't need to schedule a hearing for surplus property because we've already done that. The property that he is, that he is interested in purchasing, we've already had a hearing on tonight.
I'd like to ask a couple clarifying questions if I could.
Sure.
I don't know, Harry?
Mr. Bean, would you answer a couple questions here, please?
I'll do my best.
My first question is, if you could just, for the benefit of all of us, when you talk about cleaning up the property, what does that, the obvious would be getting rid of materials that have been dumped there, but in terms of keeping it clean, and how would you, how would you keep the people that are using the area, out of the area from coming back?
Well, I'd feel more comfortable in telling them that they're not supposed to be there. Like this child that was over there, if I'd caught him when he was going up the tree, I've explained to him that, you know, you could wind up getting killed or hurt seriously if that tree falls on you. I'd have done that either way. The guy's over there going party and stuff. I told that one guy, I said, you know, there's a daycare center right across the street there, guy. You probably ought to get out of here. But I don't know. I think that, you know, I seem to have a lasting impression on some of them. I get their attention.
Go ahead. Another follow-up question, just a little different angle on things. As I understood when you first approached us about the property, one of your interests is because you have, I believe you said your daughter lives next door to that property and...
Well, my granddaughter intends to live at 32 Davis Place.
So I was thinking about the situation here, and as I understand your interest, it's to be able to clean up the property and protect the other property. The other issue that got raised tonight is what some speculative future city use of the property. Would you be open to considering a lease of the property as opposed to an outright purchase? Because I guess in the long run, if the city had a productive use for it and was going to keep it cleaned up, would that be another option to consider here?
Well, like I said, it's wetlands. You cannot use it for anything. I can't, they can't, nobody can.
I understand in terms of the exact...
I really am not. I hadn't even considered that. It doesn't sound like the, you know, it sounds like I'd wind up cleaning it up and take care of it for the city. I don't know. I'd have to give it more consideration, I guess. I would really rather just purchase it. And, you know, what I would intend to do is probably put up pieces of chain-linked fence, not completely around the boundary. Put up like four feet of chain-linked fence and then leave 20 feet open and four feet of chain-linked fence. So it kind of designates it as not a place to hang out. You know, they'd see the fence here, 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 and over to the, over to the bridge. And an average person would realize, you know, that's somebody's yard, and it would be a lot easier to keep them out of there. You know, I wouldn't block them off completely.
Along the edge of the tree line there, are you talking about?
Yes, just along the edge of the tree line. But like I said, not a continuous fence where I'd have to disrupt roots. And when I put that foundation in for the house, there was a big root about six inches through that came across, and I made a, made a spot in the foundation for that root to continue through so that I didn't hurt the tree. Cut that six-inch root off, and that big maple tree would have probably not fared as well. So I left it, left it under there. But, any other questions or...
Okay, to summarize again here, we have an offer, unsolicited offer to purchase, two different offers to purchase parts of Lot 59. We held a hearing the other, earlier this evening to, on whether or not we should declare Lot 59 as surplus. We can't, well, we can do two things at one point in time on this particular offer for Mr. Wiley. We can't accept the offer at this point in time because we have not declared it surplus, but we're going to take that subject up under unfinished business. Okay? We could, if we wanted to, just, so we can accept it right now, we could reject it right now if somebody wanted to move in that direction, or we could wait until we take up the discussion on whether or not to declare it surplus and then act on it after that.
Well, let me take up the surplus first.
Do we have a consensus on that? Wait until we have the discussion on whether or not to declare the lot surplus before we take up Mr. Wiley's offer? Or would you rather discuss Mr. Wiley's offer now?
I would just move to table it.
I'm sorry?
I would move to table it.
Mr. Wiley's?
Yeah.
Okay, we, you would second that?
I'd second.
I think you have to be in the room to second it. Okay, okay. We have a motion from Counselor Valens to second, to, I'm sorry, to table the offer from Mr. Wiley, and that motion was seconded by Counselor Doyle. All those in favor of tabling this matter at this point in time, please raise a hand.
Can I just ask a procedural question? What does that, what does that do technically?
Well, we're not tabling it to date certain, so it could be taken off the table at any point.
Including later after discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we're not tabling it to date. His motion did not include tabling it to date certain, so it is simply on the table and could be taken off at any point.
We're not allowed to discuss or argue when it's being tabled, is that correct?
Not on the motion to table, right. Okay, everybody understand that? So this would, if we pass this motion, it would put it on the table to date uncertain, including it could be brought up again at a future meeting, could be brought up again tonight by a positive motion to take it off the table. All those in favor of tabling, please raise a hand. All those opposed, please raise a hand. We have two votes in the affirmative, four opposed, the motion to table fails. Okay, who else wants to try?
Well, I guess that would mean we make a motion to accept Mr. Wiley's offer.
We can't.
All right, then we, I don't know what we would do.
Well...
We have to declare that property surplus before we...
Which we're going to take up under...
Before we consider either of the offers.
Right, the only other motion that would remain right now would be to reject the offer.
We just did that. No, we didn't do that. We just didn't table it.
It seems very unfair.
Why would, why would we even consider this offer until we knew what the land was worth? I mean, the deed's got restrictions on it, and whoever owns that land in its entirety or has an obligation to allow parking from the old Scott and Williams and to maintain the parking lot also. Those are restrictions that go with the deed that the city of Laconia worked out with Scott and Williams.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that about the restrictions?
The restrictions are that whoever bought that property...
The parking lot?
Yeah, would have to maintain the parking lot because it's part of the deed. They would have to maintain the parking for use as a parking lot, and they would have to maintain the parking lot. That's our obligation right now, to keep the parking lot and to maintain the parking lot.
Mr. Myers, if you want to wave in here?
Yeah, so a couple of things here. So I think this is a little bit unique in not having a full motion to it because, as the mayor said, we had the public hearing on the exact same two lots for declaring it surplus based on another, on another offer. When this offer came to us a couple of Fridays ago, the agenda was already printed, and I shared it with you at the meeting on the Monday night that whatever the January date was, we had it. So you knew it was coming. We spoke of it, but it was not officially presented to you until this evening. So I don't, other than the motion to table, which has failed at this point, I think you just acknowledge that you have received the offer at this point, and that's the only action you would take on the offer being presented. Tied in with the unfinished business, the original discussion there is, do you want to declare Lot 22 and/or Lot 59 as surplus? And we advertised the public hearing for both of them, but also indicated with the language, a portion of or all of both lots. So it gave you flexibility as opposed to just trying to put some kind of a parameter or a land designation for the part that Mr. Bean was requesting, and then a separate designation just for the part Mr. Wiley does. We want to allow flexibility and just ease of the public knowing which two lots were in discussion, and that it could be all of that land or a portion of that land. So on the Wiley offer, you don't have a motion because typically the motion would be move it to a public hearing for the purpose of getting input for declaring it surplus, which in essence, we did earlier before you officially received the offer because Mr. Bean was requesting a portion of both of those same lots. So I don't think you have to take any other action other than a motion to table, or you could reject, but the, probably the procedural next step.
If we reject the offer, can it be resubmitted for the next meeting?
I have to refer to Roberts rules. I don't know. It would almost be like if somebody were, if a counselor was asking for the same item to be placed on the agenda every two weeks, and every two weeks it was voted down. I don't think they can bring back...
Well, Mr. Wiley could write us a new letter.
He could, and if the offer was changed somehow, it could. But I think, I think the bigger discussion should be around going on to unfinished business for this item, and then discussing whether there's interest in surplusing some of or all of either lot. And then depending on what that decision is, might tell you whether you even have to take up the other offer.
So as I said, the only motion that we would be germane right now, not asking anyone to make it or even suggesting it in any way, but the only motion that would be in order would be a motion to reject the offer. If no one wants to make that motion, then we'll move on on the agenda, and it can be brought up again.
Have we not suspended rules to take items out of order? We've done it before.
Suspend it for what?
Have we not suspended rules to take items out of order?
But, but what is the, may I ask what the point of that would be?
Oh, then we could take Mr. Wiley's offer and take it after the vote on the surplus. Oh, then we could take Mr. Wiley's offer and take it after the vote on the surplus.
But we're, what I've already said is that I would recognize a motion to that effect anyway. After we have the discussion on whether or not you want to declare this surplus or not, assuming that the answer is yes, for the sake of argument. If you want then to make a motion to sell the property, in either case, to Mr. Wiley, it would be germane. You can make that motion then. So all we're going to do now, we're going to do one of two things. We're either going to, we're either going to have a vote on a motion to reject his offer or we're just going to acknowledge his offer and move on on the agenda and it come up, can come up again later.
You got two hands.
Counselor Hamel.
Since we, we voted not to table it, can, why can't, like what you, what you kind of just said, acknowledge the receipt of it and can it go under unfinished business?
Yeah, we've guessed exactly what we're going to do.
Make that motion?
Yeah, that's what I want to do. Okay.
Doesn't need to be a motion. What motion are you going to make?
Well, I don't know.
I'm going to consider it germane, once we get to unfinished business, or to, to unfinished business number two. After we've discussed the surplus, I'm going to consider any motions with regard to Mr. Wiley's offer to be in order. I don't think we need a motion. It's just the way it's going to happen. Okay, so no more, nobody's going to make a motion now, right? Nobody's going to make a motion to reject.
I thought we had a motion on there to accept the offer and put it on unfinished business for the next council meeting, wasn't that?
You do what?
No, it was to acknowledge.
Acknowledge, acknowledge the offer and we'll go on unfinished business for the next council meeting, wasn't that?
It wasn't a motion, it was a question.
We're talking about tonight, not next council meeting.
I'm so confused.
That was a question that I asked about putting it under unfinished business, but if we, do we have to handle it tonight? Can it stay? It can stay under unfinished.
Sure.
Then we can find out whatever information at the.
A motion would be, and you could table it later, you could do anything you want with it. Motions with regard to Mr. Wiley's offer will be in order after we discuss the issue of declaring the property surplus.
Okay.
Okay? So as for now, then we'll just simply acknowledge that we have received this letter from Mr. Wiley and his offers are on the table. And we will move on to unfinished business. The first item under unfinished business is second reading of Resolution 2016-02 relative to the acceptance of donations from Spinnaker Cove Yacht Club for the Black Brook Geothermic Study in the amount of $500. And that is on page 124 of your packet and the resolution itself is on page 125. Is there any questions or discussion about this resolution before we get to motions? Earlier last summer, we accepted a donation from another party for this study from the town of Guilford for $6,000. This is a, a second and independent donation going to the same, to the same fund. Okay, so the first motion would be in order then would be to move, to move a waiving of the Resolution 2016-02 in its entirety. Can I have that motion, please? Counselor Hamel, seconded by Counselor Doyle, thank you. Any discussion of waiving the reading of the entire resolution? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in the affirmative, that motion carries. Okay, the appropriate motion now would be to move a second reading of a Resolution 2016-02 relative to authorizing the city manager to accept donations on behalf of the city from Spinnaker Cove Yacht Club for the Black Brook Geothermological Study in the amount of $500 as presented. Moved by Counselor Hamel, seconded by Counselor Bullock. Any discussion of accepting that $500? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in the affirmative and that carries. Thank you and we are back to Davis Place. Okay, so we had a public hearing earlier in the night to call, to declare lots 59 and Lot 22 in their entirety as surplus property at this point in time. Discussion, motions?
Oh, I'll start off.
Counselor Bowens.
Like I said at the last meeting and the same theme that I carried over to the planning board in objecting to, the planning board's taking a position on this, this is all too premature. If we're really serious about declaring a portion or the entire property a surplus, what we need to do is we need to get an evaluation or appraisal so we know what we're selling for. For example, the Bean property, the Bean bid, we got an offer of $1,000, which doesn't strike me as a very fair offer. It's going to increase the tax by $10,000. Now, I know that's not a very good indicator of a fair market value, but for selling it for, for a thousand bucks is crazy without more information. Likewise, with respect to Lot 59, the remainder of Lot 59, selling that without getting more information in terms of its value and that would probably be a much better, correct me if I'm misquoting you, a much easier path to getting a value in terms of an appraisal. Little, Harry Bean's little strip of land is very difficult to appraise and I agree with that. But the entire strip of land, if it were appraised, we could at least have a sense of what values we were doing if we were really serious. Number one. Number two, although I oppose the planning board's motion, it is something that we should think about in terms of what we can do to develop the land. We could get in there and clean up the property. We can do that. We can keep it clean. We can take all kinds of measures to make that property more valuable than it is at very little cost to the city. And it's something that we should consider and it's something that we can, should consider when we have all the information that we need. I'm done.
I think we have all.
Counselor Bullock.
I think we have all the information we need. The piece that Mr. Bean wants to purchase, you can't do anything with it. Even the city can't do anything with it. So why do we want to hang on to it? We could put it on the tax roll tonight and we'd be making more money than what we would make any other way. So I just don't know why we need to go and hire, we have an assessing department here in the city of Laconia that assesses our properties and we're paying taxes on that. Why can't they tell us what it's worth? Why do we have to hire somebody?
Didn't they tell us what it was worth?
Does it make, it doesn't make any sense.
Well, for clarification on that, on, on that issue, my understanding is that the city manager has been advised by assessing that if Mr. Bean adds that piece of property or those, and it's, and those two pieces of property, if you will, to his lot on the, on the far side of the brook, it would add approximately $10,800 to the taxable value of his existing lot. Is that correct?
Now, isn't that worth something to the city?
Mr. Bean, did I raise a sore subject?
You know, if that's added to my property, it will increase the value of my property by $10,800. But just because of that, that does not mean that the property is worth $10,800. The property is worth, the fair market value, is what somebody will pay for it. I want to, I want to ask you, would you, would you pay $5,000 to have it, the survey done and the legal work, plus pay $1,000 for it? Would you, Mr. Mayor? All you can do.
I want.
All you can do is drive by it and say, yep, that's mine right there. You can't do nothing else. You can't put a picnic table in there, you can't do anything else. Would you, Mr. Bullock, buy that for six grand?
No.
You can drive by it. The only one it's worth anything to is me. That's why.
Well, now, would you, would you, would you concede that it, that it at least theoretically is worth something to the eventual owner of Lot 22?
Possibly, possibly. It may, it'd be worth as much to him or her as it would be worth to me.
Right.
Because it would, would have bought the property. Yes, I would agree to that.
Counselor Hamel.
I asked the city manager last week to look into Lot 22 and to find out if that's a buildable lot or not and hopefully he might have something.
I do. Actually, we can pick back, we can pass those, I think I had the two of them. So probably the best way to look at this map that I've just handed out is to turn it upside down. All right? So what the question was, if the land that Mr. Bean was looking to purchase, if somebody, if Mr. Bean came out at a later time or someone different came along and said, well, now I'd like to buy the remainder of Lot 22, could it be a buildable lot? So we haven't scoped out the biggest size house that could happen, but where that little shaded area is and the arrows pointing to the brook shows you where a side setback would have to be from the brook to where the house could be in order to not encroach on that 50-foot area and then also to the rear 50-foot based on the acreage of the lot. So that would be the back property line and the side property line and that shaded area of a structure. So obviously, a house isn't going to fit in and of itself on just the dark area. But if at a later point, somebody were to come in and say, well, I already own that area, just sell me lot, the remainder of Lot 22, you do get a buildable lot in that sense. Now, that's not to say that there couldn't be a conditional use permit from the planning board for building into a buffer and you could ask for a variance for building into the, to a setback area, but without either of those things, a variance or a conditional use permit, that would be the rear setback and the side setback. And obviously, if Lot 22 still existed as it does today, you'd be too close to that boundary line to build without having either one of those approvals. But again, to the remainder of the land, not only in Lot 22, but to the remainder of Lot 59 as it continues, it potentially could be buildable under that type of scenario. Yeah, I know that's not what Mr. Bean's offers today and I'm not insinuating, but I think the question was, could that area ever be a buildable lot, a building lot? Not just with what he's looking to purchase in his offer as of today, but with an adjacent piece of property that someone could put together or request to put together somewhere in the future, the answer is a potential for yes.
So if you had this lot, 22, and this lot here, are you saying you could build a house or you still couldn't?
I'm saying, yes, you could because now you would, you would lose that property line in between 22 and that portion of 59 and your setback would be all the way over on the other side of Lot 22. So we're just showing you, I, I think this was meant to just show the distance from the brook being, needing to have 50 feet. Where could you start the back corner? Where could you start the side of it in order to comply with that 50-foot setback, which is DES, unless you got a variance or a conditional use permit, whichever may be appropriate in the process?
I mean, I think, given where the parking lot is and the restrictions that Counselor Bowens outlined, the, the point that I was trying to make with my question to Mr. Bean earlier was the, the, the only real value of that part of Lot 59 there, between the brook and Lot 22, would be to either Lot 21 or 22. 21, Mr. Bean already owns, 22, the city currently owns. The land in the middle is the land we're talking about, which could be considered part adjacent, he's, he's planning on annexing it to Lot 21. It could also be annexed theoretically to Lot 22.
Correct. And it would be more valuable as that. If this, if this is sold here to Mr. Bean, this lot here becomes useless. Other than if you want to use it for a driveway exiting, was that Howard Street?
Yeah, and I think, I think as I understand it, the origin of Lot 22 was the right of way for the roadway that came across the bridge and then exited back out to Davis Place, whenever that was.
Yeah. Could, could that, could that roadway go into the, the parking lot? In other words, if this was, if this, if 22 stayed together with what, with a piece of property by the brook, can it?
You'd have to, you'd have to maintain an easement across the back of the Lot 22 because.
Well, can, can it, can it go beyond 22 and take part of 59?
Sure it could, but it would have to go.
Anything's possible. We could look at 12 different scenarios of how you could combine the land.
Hook up with the parking lot simply by following the book, but you would have to have an easement across 22 to do that.
I guess then what I might be asking is, in order to keep that as a whole buildable lot, would you be interested in that other piece? It would be more valuable to you in the future.
Huh? The rest of 22?
Yes.
Correct. It would be more valuable to you.
I guess that would depend on the price.
Well, it would be more valuable to you as a building lot in the future, less valuable to us because it's, becomes, a portion of that becomes useless property to the city as an unbuildable lot.
I see where you're going with that. I didn't, I didn't realize that that was buildable, that .15 acres I.
Well, that's why I asked the city manager to look into that.
That does make a certain amount of sense. As far as me ever building or, I'm not a big fan of sardines, if you know what I mean by that. I really don't think that that would be a good.
But I mean, it's, it's actually, it's actually bigger than the lot 32 that.
It's bigger than Lot 21.
Yeah, 21 that you're on now.
Apparently, but it's, it's bigger.
It is, but Lot 21, you know, you almost have no place to put the snow. It's so small.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
On this one.
Snow removal in this town's been a, I own several pieces of property and snow, snow removal really isn't.
Is that something you would consider? Think about?
I guess I'd have to think about it, but like I said, it would depend on, on what the city wanted for it. I mean, you know, if they want 40, 50 grand for it, no, it's not a consideration, obviously.
If I can, and just knowing where we've got the land on 59 across the brook coming down from Howard Street, we would have to, I believe, I'll look at it again, the bridge would then be crossing into what is currently Lot 22. We would need to require some kind of an easement on the property if the city was still looking to maintain the crossing of that bridge because now if Lot 22 was sold, it would be going into what would now be in private property.
The bridge is, the bridge is located right there at the corner, at the point.
Correct. That's why I was.
I was actually both.
Yeah, but this is on, on, on this one here, that piece is taken off.
I'm just concerned about us trying to come to an agreement on the fly without looking and now annexing.
Doesn't need to be on the fly here.
Well, I get it. I'm just pointing out that we need to maintain the bridge access with all that we're looking at here.
Yeah. But on, on this plan here, which was in our last one, this packet, that portion that extended, that little triangle you're talking about is not part of that. It's been taken off. And the new dimensions are here. This is that piece that you're talking about, right here. So you could drive around here and then go out around that lot. It is.
Sorry, Mr. Bean.
Maybe I could suggest that you would connect the rest of 22 to the other adjacent part of 59.
Well, that's what we're talking about. Well, we would need a right of way, we would need an easement across 22 to do that.
Well, if you just connect 22 right to, right to the other side of 59 as opposed to the brook side of 59, then you could still put your house in there. You follow me?
Show me.
Okay, we was talking, this is the part that I want to buy.
Yeah.
And I wanted to buy just a sliver here so that it comes out to the corner of the bridge.
Right, right.
And right over to somewhere in here, which would come to the edge of the woods. If I bought just this and--
Without the sliver, you mean?
No, with the sliver.
With the sliver.
And this area over here that I wanted to get.
Right.
You could always take the rest of 22 and connect it to that, instead of, you already own the rest of 59 here, so just call that part of that, and you could readjust the boundary line there and make a good, a good house lot there.
Well, but this is a parking lot that has to stay a parking lot.
Does the parking lot come all the way to 22?
Yeah.
Oh, it does?
Yeah.
No, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah. So that's why that piece in the middle ends up useless.
Okay, anyone else want to weigh in on this? What's germane at the moment is the declaration of either of these two lots as surplus property.
This is my suggestion of--
Counselor Lippman.
I think there's a lot of if-this-than-that kind of stuff going on, and I'd like to give the manager some time to meet with the two interested buyers, to talk through some of the options and frame them a little bit more concretely for us, and also to consider--
Be with that.
Also to consider, I know, just put that on the table there, but, you know, the first purpose that understood that you came forward on the situation was because, trying to protect the property and, you know, whether a lease option is another option, understanding that you wouldn't want to get into a situation where you're being taken advantage of by way of the lease, but I just don't feel like we've got this together enough in terms of what to take an action on and not feel like we may have-- I know it doesn't seem in the scheme of things like a big deal maybe to people, but I think it's the principle of it and how we handle transactions generally that I think we need to try to get this put together a little bit more concretely in terms of what our options are.
Do you have specific items that you would like the administrative team to look into?
Well, I'd like to better understand what the future interest of the city, if any, is really in that spot with respect to any development, you know, whether we can accommodate what we'd want to do without interfering with, you know, if we don't really need to keep the property and it's not having any value, then, you know, get rid of it. But let's sort that out a little bit more concretely as to whether there's a way to navigate that, that allows us to dispose of the surplus property, and then I guess, what's the best way to configure the surplus property to maximize the value to the people who are interested in it and to the city itself?
Could I suggest one other avenue that ought to be explored, based on what I've heard tonight, and that would be that, I think we've heard valid concerns tonight about the condition of certain parts of the wooded parts of both of those parcels in terms of, in terms of the activity that they're soliciting in effect by lack of maintenance on the city's part, and if we're going to maintain ownership of them, I would think that we would at least want to consider cleaning them up and doing whatever forestry work is necessary to try to discourage the activity that's taking place in both of them now. So it would seem to me that one piece of information that we ought to have is, how much would it cost us to do that? I mean, I'm assuming the reason that we haven't done it to date is--
I think it's been forgotten.
Lack of, lack of resources, but, you know, so I have no idea how much it would cost to clean up those two lots and, in the case of the, and by clean up, I don't mean just take junk out of them. I mean, thin the woods enough to where it would discourage the kind of behavior we're talking about, and take out dead trees and the kind of trees that Mr. Bean is talking about that are laying over on their side and that sort of thing, so.
We could do a cleaning up of those types of materials. We have to be careful about cutting and thinning trees within that wetland buffer, though. So whether it's a scrub tree or quality hardwood, typically not getting quality hardwood that close to a wet area, but we would be in a position to clean it up in essence of dumped material or fallen trees and branches. We would not be in there pulling out, you know, stumps, and we would not be thinning trees within the setback, nor would a private person be able to. That is, DES regulates that. So I don't want to get the vision that we can thin it out and therefore it's more visible, and it might, you know, cause some of the challenges to move on elsewhere.
Can, like on the portion that Mr. Bean is interested in, I've been there several times now, and there are trees, you know, like at a 45-degree angle. Can Public Works go there and finish falling those trees?
Yes, if they fall, we can't necessarily, again, pull out stumps and roots just because of erosion and stuff, but we could certainly have stuff that has fallen and is no longer a viable living tree.
So I think if we just put it down to the ground for now, it would help that situation.
Mr. Bean.
You know, I was thinking about the rest of this lot 22 here, and there was a gentleman who was sitting over here in the front, the Riverwalk guy, lack of--
Mr. Sawyer.
Okay? He said that when you went across that bridge from over here on Howard Street, I think it was, you go across that bridge, you would go take a left and go down Jewett Brook and then down to the river, or he wanted to maintain a piece of property to take a right and go out to Davis Place.
That would be lot 22.
That would be 30 or so feet of lot 22, so there's your, that would be one thing that you could do with the rest of 22. That would satisfy him and me, too.
So I think I've got, if that's the intent of the council, I've got guidance on the piece that Mr. Bean is interested in. Is there any, is it the same guidance or different guidance on what Mr. Wiley has brought forward?
I think it's--
I think the property that Mr. Wiley's looking for is, that's over an acre, isn't it?
1.69.
Yeah.
A good part of which is that parking lot.
The first piece, the main piece that I want is--
Yeah, just a square off your property.
Type A, yes, squares it off.
Yep.
And you can see, I have a picture, an aerial picture, that I believe you all have somewhere, of the old Scott Williams building used to have, in that part, used to be a woodshop building, which is no longer there, and it's, that's where it's grown up. At one point, I had trimmed all the trees down back in the early, late 70s or early 80s to keep people out of there. You'll see how much land it actually is, and from my corner of my property to the Jewett Brook, it is probably like anywhere from, I don't know, 60 to 75 feet. So there's not anything that they could really do with that piece of property in there, and I think squared, it may, maybe a third of an acre at the most, or a quarter of an acre. Where the acreage comes in is from the left-hand side and where the parking lot is, with all the pieces of land that goes over, including the bridge, and on the other side of Jewett Brook, where Victoria Woods is. So I'm looking mainly just for the little piece that abuts my property. Also, the parking lot is, has to stay there, so it's not a buildable lot. It's supposed to be maintained, I guess, for the Scott Williams building in the deed.
To me, that's what we need to know. What portion of that parking lot has to stay there, which, it's just a lot of unknowns here to me.
Mr. Myers.
It is in the deed, and that was the transfer for it, as in they refer to it as a condominium, and they transferred the land with the parking. But if both parties today, meaning the city and the housing authority, agreed that that was not needed for overflow parking, and both parties wanted to withdraw that as a covenant on the property, and I may not have the exact language down, I'll defer to Counselor Bounds, but--
Just don't do that.
That is, that is something that could occur. So just because it says today it has to stay at a parking lot, with the right petition and the right agreement in place between parties, that could go away and that very well could accommodate something different in the future.
Counselor--
I would withdraw the, off a B. I was more under the assumption that they didn't want to separate the piece of property as much as if you bought it as a whole. I was going to be willing to purchase that piece and then give back a piece to the city if they required it. But my main interest is, is just getting that piece to square off my piece of property, which, that piece cannot be used or developed with all the boundaries of the river and the brook, and the only feasible thing would be in the future for any, if there was any type of development, would be with my property, which would adjoin it and make it a piece that would be developed. For the future of the city of who knows where, what my kids would do, or I don't know if I'll be around that long, or--
I think we understand that, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lippman.
So I'd like to make a motion to table the discussion for the evening and ask the manager to go put together the options that maximize the value to the city, respecting what the people are coming forward with, and what future consideration we need if we're going to have some sort of recreational component there. But, you know, I just think there's too many if-buts on the table tonight to make a final decision on this, and to, rather than just try to have a committee meeting of the whole council and just-- We're not able to bring closure to this tonight.
We have a motion to table to date uncertain and keep this on the agenda under unfinished business.
Second.
Is there a second? Counselor Bounds?
Second.
All right, we need a vote then on motion to table to date uncertain and keep this on the agenda under unfinished business. And you all heard the stipulation as far as information that the city manager is being asked to acquire and come back to city council with.
And I'm happy to take that direction should you vote that way. I just want to point out for the record that I view the two parcels that were requested for purchase, if you will, to be significantly different, and the fact that the parcel in one of Mr. Wiley's parcel A is riverfront property. So I'm just, so we're all on the same page going forward.
Understood.
I view that as significantly different.
All right, we're going to vote on the motion table. All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in the affirmative, and that motion is tabled. Thank you. Thank you all for participating in our discussion tonight and helping us.
I just don't get it.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Herr.
No.
Counselor Baer.
No, no.
Question.
Wiley's offering to stay on as unfinished business also.
Both of them will stay on the agenda as unfinished business.
I don't know.
Okay, we have no nominations tonight. Council comments. Any counselors have anything for the record tonight? No? Okay, we have no need for a non-public session.
He does.
Counselor Baer is brokenhearted about that, and she moves-- Did you have a counsel comment?
No.
Counselor Hamel?
No, I'm all set.
Counselor, Counselor Baer moves to adjourn, seconded by Counselor Bullock. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.